Everybody ready?
Yep.
Waiting on the block?
Yep.
Waiting on the block? I'll call this meeting to order. This is the call's meeting to order. Those present are Jared, Kent, Susan, Chris, Echo, Nick Gaz is here, and myself, Rex. All right. Let's do the superintendent report. Okay. It's quick swelling. I'm here for a couple of weeks, but with this rain coming up, I'm sure it's gonna start again. But there's a lot of green, blue-green algae out there, which that's raising the pH level in the first cell. So I'm gonna have to keep a close watch on it. Other than that, I haven't done any mowing yet or nothing like that, but everything else looks okay. As long as the wind blows, it helps out a lot. So, but on the calm, calm days, it doesn't wanna get rid of the... I can't remember the word, Dick. I wanna use hydro, hydro-something, you know? The warmer the temperature, kind of disperses the endowings and everything too. So if it gets bad enough, then we could have to put chemicals in, but we've never had to do it before. It happens over spring. So other than that, everything's, everything's good. I'm sure it'll start flowing again, so if it keeps raining anyway. That's all I got. Uh, minutes of the previous meeting. I'm just catching up. Almost there. When did we pump? Hmm? When did we, when did we start pumping, does he think? Well, we usually do it in the fall. Should be this year. Should be this year? Yeah.
Do you have a list of those that are up for pumping?
I haven't got it updated yet, no.
Did you do that?
I will work on it.
Thank you.
But usually, you know, bring it up to the board. I look and see what I think is right, and then needs to be done, and then they agree yes or no. So it's just not one person does it.
Of course not. I still want to see it.
All right. And two, on the, on the bills, Knox County Clerk sent a bill for an extra $119 for election fees. He said he already paid 160, but undoubtedly, they, maybe one more week, maybe, do you know about that? So, so the rest of the towns had to split whatever cost, and so that's what that is. And then the, for the mowing of the school, that is for three times. So I mowed it yesterday or last night, but it's not, it's not on this, it's not on this.
I thought we voted to pay Cindy and Jason for that. I must have been not listening.
No, we, yeah, we was out, but Kent mowed it for us.
Yeah, I know that, yes, yeah.
Until the next bid or whatever.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve the previous minutes, read, and the bills paid, and the financial reports. You might make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for them.
The minutes is read, the financial statement, and what's bill paid, bill paid, second.
I kinda have a question.
Oh, one second.
Sorry.
Okay, please.
Um, on the list of who paid the sewer bill, um, as opposed to the amount that you have here on sewer fees and the back sewer fees, those numbers don't agree. Um, last month, I looked at it, and it was off by $48. Is there a reason, maybe?
There's, that's not.
Yeah, that's the sewer, sewer fees and the Kooke Collector back sewer fees. I just wondered if there was something I was missing. I thought they should.
The back sewer fees is listed
Right.
there, and the year, year to date is there, is to the right.
I'm not asking about year to date, I'm talking about the current month. You have $700 left in sewer fees, and $664.19 from Knox County Collector, right?
That's my, that's my.
And that equals six, $1,364.19, right?
Yeah, $19 cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably saw on the, on the total, the deposits. Well, the problem is, is last month, I looked at it, and it was on $43. So I don't know what the, what, where that number comes from, I guess. Are you taking numbers from two different places, or?
No. The 19 cent, it's off 10 cents because Carrie, or CC didn't have the right amount, and so instead of making change, I just put the 10 cents in. So it's gonna show 10 cents more on the deposit, actually, than what the sewer fee actually says. It would've been 1364.19.
So the total on the receipts should be 19.
Exactly.
You just, it just totaled correctly?
I gave you the city of dollar.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what happened.
Well, I know it's probably too late to ask, but again, I'm looking at last month, and it was off $43. I just, I don't know what, what the deal is. Yeah, so last month, the sewer's, um, sewer fees were 1111, and the Knox County Collector back sewer fees were 551.53. It totaled 1,662.53 on the income statement, but the deposit slips said 1,619.53, which is $43 difference.
I'll pay it last month with me.
Here, the beans knocked out there for you.
Well, there's more.
There's more in the income statement than there is on the list of deposits.
Right, right. Not sure that's, I may not got the deposit slips to show what I put in my bag.
Oh, I'm sure you do.
No, I was just saying, but I didn't, I, I, I didn't catch that. Unless I missed, I could've missed some, but I guess.
Is this on the clock? 13.
Yeah.
Well, then, Mar- March, she's talking about.
Yeah, March, where they have the April meeting.
March one, another you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Then April one figured it out already.
Yeah. I didn't know what the, where those numbers were coming from, they come from different sources, or?
Yeah, but she's, she's got March. I got March, so I'll have to kind of.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I got.
I understand, I think, yeah, that's last month.
That was even, that's the month before that.
It's April. The date on the front is gonna say.
Yeah, it was on April meeting, but it was March's number. Where's the one?
662.53, 619.53.
I've got.
No, I got you stuff, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to take up a lot of time to this, but.
I've got $43 difference.
Yeah, that's what I had, 43.
Oh, okay.
Let's just say 42.
Forty, no, 43.
You can look into it later. I don't want you to have to spend a lot of time on it. We got other things to talk about. I just asked the question.
But I don't know, you know, that 43 doesn't even compute to anything.
Right.
It'd be a back sewer bill of 41, if it was not paid the month before, so I've missed one somewhere.
Might be, maybe you could add a date of the deposit, might help us trace that too. It could be just something stupid, but.
Could be a typo.
Inverted number?
Yeah.
Any of that kind of.
Yeah. I'll have to check you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it.
Um, do you have a total amount billed that you billed for last month?
I don't.
Didn't you get that? You can't protect?
Like they decided not to?
No, I don't think we really voted on it. I think it was.
What?
I asked Rex if he could tell me the amount that he billed last month for sewer.
Wow.
Like a total. I, I don't see why not either. Do I need to move the motion to that?
I don't know.
Anybody else have any interest in seeing that?
Well, we basically said what it is right here.
No, that's what was paid. So basically, what it is, is I'm asking for the amount that's billed every month, and then I can kinda figure out where we are with what has been paid, what is going to be delinquent, what we have to do, what our accounts receivable balance is. So today, if I asked you, what is the total that people owe on their sewer bill? Can you tell me that?
I can, now that it looks, yes.
Okay. Can you include that?
In case anyone can back your fees.
Asking. For information.
Backs your fees, is that not?
Let's add it to your taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
That's a yearly, yearly deal, like.
You don't pay your sewer bill on the taxes.
Yeah. Any interest, the pound, they just compound it, and it costs, the cost layover tax, the amount to let go.
I'd like to make a motion to have the council receivable balance and the monthly amount billed added to the financial statement, so every month. Anybody?
I, I.
Okay.
What we got is here on the paper. I understand that this is what was received. That's fine, but we, if we get a list of bills.
I don't want a list, I just want a number, a bottom number. I don't want any detail. We have what is paid here. I would like to know what we billed and what is the balance after each payment. That's all. A council receivable is part of an asset. I'd just like to know that.
Anybody? All right.
So I need a motion to approve last month's minutes. Bill's paid in the financial report with a mistake, gonna be fixed. Of the $42.
Motion. Chris makes motion?
Second. All in favor?
Gerald. Is everybody in favor?
No.
Two opposed.
Two opposed.
Chris, Jared, Kent, Ford, approved.
Motion approved.
Hold on, are we gonna continue to approve bills and everything after they've been paid, instead of?
We've been it for 30 years.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure there's someone over there.
If you guys need to see this, you see, you already knows about it.
Yeah, what is it?
This, uh, from the attorney general.
Oh, good. I haven't got my copy yet.
Pardon?
One copy or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I have the copy? I haven't gotten my copy yet. Thank you. Would you like to have me explain? I'd be happy to.
Pardon?
Okay. Uh, in December, I started asking for documents. I did ask you about the ARPA funds. I asked you about the ARPA funds.
Wait a minute. I did answer you that on.
Yeah, you did, you did. But I'm, of course, this is how it starts, okay? It was in December of last year, when I started asking questions and asking for documentation. So it's long before I ran for the board, even though I've asked for things since then and not received anything either. So the list of things that I have asked for are, I've asked, this is the fifth time now, for a list of assets owned by the village. Um, I have a form here that comes from the Missouri Rules and Regulations, and it is a list of real estate and equipment inventory records. The second page is real estate and building inventory. It says, "Prepared and filed pursuant to Section 231.280 RS Missouri 2002." It is required by law that this gets billed in. And this is, like I said, the fifth time that I've asked for that. The second thing I've asked for was the budget. And the reason I asked for that is the rules and regulations state that if we don't have a budget, a current budget, that we have to go by the last budget that was prepared, and we're not allowed to spend one more penny than was on that last prepared budget. So I've been asking to get the budget together, ask them about that. I haven't gotten the copy of the last prepared budget either. The third thing I asked for were minutes from the 2020, 2021, and 2022 minutes of the board meetings. I've asked for all copies of current contracts. I've asked for the last published financials that were in the newspaper. I've asked for all written bids for the last five years. I have asked for a list of all current ordinances with the summaries. I've asked for documentation of change from village to the fourth class city. I've asked for a balance sheet. I've asked for totals of billing by the month for sewer. I've asked for text messages regarding meetings, private meetings before board meetings. I've asked for all written bids for the past five years. I've asked for documentation of the board's separation of duties. I've asked for the last state audit copy. I've asked for all documentation regarding bid limits that the city has posed. I've asked for all newspaper ads for the last three years, and I've asked for redacted copies of 1099Gs for the last three years. Now, I haven't asked just one time, and when I started to talk to you about the December 13th text message to you and to Rex. Rex and you both stated that I couldn't ask questions on your personal cellphone. Rex decided to call the sheriff Knox County and have the sheriff call me and tell me that I couldn't ask any questions, which violates the sunshine law in a big way, right off the bat. So that's when I started asking other questions to try to put some sort of semblance to what this organization is, and what this does, and what we can do to improve or think forward, instead of just letting things slide by. So I started doing some investigating, and I also have CC'd every correspondence to ask the clerk of record, which is Rex. I've also CC'd on every one of those to Jordan Forrest. That's what I was told by the sheriff to contact her. I did. But I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to answer these things. And it's, like I said, it's been since December. Even as a citizen, I need to know these things. I want to know these things.
I've talked, I sent Jay Turner.
Who's that?
The man in charge.
Oh.
Text messages between Jason and I. I sent him an email of what I sent the sheriff. Also talked to him on the phone, and he's extended it to June 21st, that if we need more time, because I explained to him my situation. I've got, my surgery is scheduled for June 15th. My pre-op is June 8th for the first surgery. So anyway, he's aware of that. And Jordan had asked me to come to her office on Monday to discuss what needs to be done.
Well, you've had six months. The law says 72 hours or three business days. And just, I need a little more time to find it, or whatever, but you've not given me any response to any of that. And you are the one that gave me the village's email address. So it went to the village email address. I don't have anybody else's emails, so it's not like I could copy you in on.
And Jordan responded to me that she, she didn't think that you was. I can get the email, I can, I'll copy it all.
She told me that she wasn't, or that you couldn't answer questions, but you could provide documents. So this is, the list that I just wrote up is the list of documents that I have requested since December, until probably two weeks ago. No, wait, I did one this week. I asked you for something for this week also. And there's been no response whatsoever.
I'm not gonna do anything till I talk to Jordan.
That's, that's mine too.
We're gonna work on it, though.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
We are.
But that's what she wants to.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were aware of it or not, 'cause I don't have your email or anybody else's, so I'm, I'm leaving it up to the record keeper to do what he's supposed to do.
We're gonna work on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that we've finished that. The motion for the minutes of the previous meeting, and the bills paid in the financial.
That's already, that's already been done.
Okay. Clerk report. Oh, let's see. That, that a law. I can't remember what else, I don't have much going on, let's see. Let me think here a minute. I didn't write it. I didn't write anything down. Other than what's in the, what's in the minutes for this month. And talking to Jordan, I did do that. Let's see. And I talked to Jay Turner in the state on the, on the compliance. I think that's about it. Any old business.
I have to bring up our bid limits again. You heard Kira. Um, I do have the legal stuff, if you want it, what we were talking about, 'cause it's not much in the minutes, but. I think I have another one here. So basically, what I was asking was, the month before, Rex had mentioned that our bid limits were set at $12,000. And he even gave me the 50.61 here. So I, I looked at it, 'cause I thought it was kinda high for a town of 100 people. And so these rules are strictly for counties and townships. So I did a little more investigating, and I called around some of the cities around in our area, which I put on a list on the second page there for you. Um, and Bering, everything goes up for bids, there's no dollar limit, even if it's $10, I guess. Edina is at 500. Hurdland is at 500. Knox City is at 100. The total of Knox County is 12,000. And I was told that the Village of Novelty was 12,000. So I had asked if we could set a smaller bid limit, more equal to villages, towns, cities around us, instead of $12,000.
Where you don't have to put a bid in, what do you?
Right, so, so if we set a bid limit at $500.
It has to go in the paper.
Or, yeah, 'cause. Or, yeah, it's $501.
Right.
It should be in the newspaper published and there should be some competition available. But at $12,000, I don't know what we would ever do that we would exceed that dollar amount.
Nothing.
Right, I mean, so that's a big number.
If, if we were to not do our own streets.
Right.
Then that would be over. That'd be like $30,000.
Right, right.
To do, have somebody do our streets.
Right, yeah, repay everything.
No, what we do a year.
Right.
It costs about $30,000 bucks. And we do it for about less than 10.
So that's why the Village of Novelty has a bid limit set at $12,000. And then who gets paid for that street work? If we do it ourselves, somebody, nobody's doing that for free.
No, I'm not doing it for free.
Exactly.
I wouldn't pay to be on this board.
I wouldn't expect you to.
For 25 years, I haven't been paid to be on this board.
I wouldn't either. But the question is, is does that, you know, create a huge conflict of interest, which is exactly against the law? And the law states that this is not something that you should be doing. I do have copies of these things that I've been talking about.
Well, we can, we can, we can lower that. I don't care about that. But even if you put a bid in the paper, if we lower that to 500 bucks, there's nobody in the country gonna lay asphalt on these streets for 500 dollars.
Well, of course not.
But I don't, that's fine with me. I don't care. We can, we can put a bid in it for 500 bucks and then have people do it all.
Well, whatever you want. I mean, I'm bringing it up. It's not just me. I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just telling you what I found. It's up to all of us to make a decision. Well, the board trustee even.
With that bid thing, I was.
I mean, all these other cities have the same problems we do, don't they? With streets and, I mean, I know Hurdon's streets aren't the best, but, yeah.
Yeah, I've read all of this.
Yeah, I just thought I would look at it and I didn't see city or village.
And not cities or more than the city. Oh, city? I heard one of these cities did it. I don't know.
Newark.
Newark?
Might be Newark.
I don't think Newark is all there.
Yeah, these are the people that I talked to. They weren't any further than that.
But that's any problem neither. You're flying here on our bidding, we can put it in the paper. Everybody else wants to do it. I don't care. It's gonna be exactly the same as it is now, but, I mean, I'm not doing no more anything.
I heard they're moving.
Yep, moving out now.
Good for you. Which is?
What was it?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the minutes for this meeting. We were gonna talk about it again.
So, if we make, here's what, here's a, here's coming, if we make the bid, you know, the limit's $500. Anything like, anything under $500, we don't have to put it in paper.
Correct.
And we don't have to.
You don't have to ask for a written bid.
We actually don't even have to ask for a written bid.
That's correct, but anything over that requires.
So anything over $500.
Right, that's kind of what we used to do, isn't it?
I mean, they just never did.
I think everybody's part of the paper.
Nobody ever, I mean, the board had never said anything. They just went ahead and done it.
Yeah. But that, I mean, that 500 dollar limit doesn't, that's fine. I don't, to me.
Is that for the job or for the, for time?
Per time, that'd be for per time. Because you couldn't, you couldn't do it by the job. I mean, if, if it was a job like putting siding on that building, that'd be a one-time.
That'd be a one-time thing.
Yeah, but if you're mowing a yard or something like that, you can't do it by the job. I mean, you could do it by the job and put it in the paper. And this is what, you know, it's gonna be 10 grand to mow the yard. You know what I'm saying? But the mowing bid would have to be per time, I would think. So, they could get every guess.
You don't know how many times you're gonna mow here.
No, the city could get really upside down on that one. Because if they said, well, we're gonna mow 30 times, and then they end up mowing it 20, we pay them for 10 more times, so.
Well, and just keep in mind though, now we've got that budget issue of when was the last budget? In 1960, did we, you know, bill $200 for the year for mowing? And are we gonna be limited to that?
I don't, I don't care about the $500 limit thing. That's, that's fine. It'd be per time or per job, based on, based on the work being done.
So it needs to be, so it needs to be worded per job.
Yeah, I mean, like the streets, it would have to be per job.
Per job.
Right.
For the streets.
Yeah.
And siding would be another job or.
Right, exactly, exactly. Even if they're all the same company.
Put a $500 cap on it. And then we'll bid $500.
Yeah, it, it has to go in the paper unless it's $100. That's fine with me. Everybody else, I don't. It's up to you guys. Well, what we have now, the mowing will need to come back in.
No, it's 125. 75, 9,000, or 120.
Yes. So the mowing is not really the, the, the.
No, it's basically capital projects.
I know, but the mowing is not, not the problem. It's the other that we have to do a bid, you know, like there each one.
Well, the thing is, we just have to put something that this is what the board does.
Like if, like if the.
If we don't have one, like it says that we need to.
Yeah, you know, it'll have to be.
Right, it'll have to be bid.
Yeah.
Well, if you use ARPA money, you have to use bids anyway.
Yeah.
So.
I'd rather have a bid on that to see.
Oh, sure. Well, written bid keeps you legal safe.
Yeah, I think Hurdon did bids on there. Anyway, it's up to you guys. If you guys wanna do that, that's fine with me.
Another thing on the, there was some confusion on the lagoon last, last month. How many times it was mowed and what the amount is. The actual amount that the city paid last year was $1,625.
I thought you put, told me 26.
I was wrong. The, the mowing for the school and the signs was 2500.
Yeah, I had that.
But the lagoon was $1,625 total.
Instead of 26, 25.
Instead of 26, I mowed it five times. I sprayed it four times, but I'll be undoubtedly charged the city for two and a half times. Because it should have been more than that, but anyway. So does anybody wanna do that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to lower the bid limit to $1,000 per job.
I can second that.
Chair makes a motion to make the bid limit set $1,000. And Sue's seconds. Favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, everybody is in favor. Motion, no, Chris is not.
Chris is not.
I'm sorry. Kent, chair, Sue's in favor.
Yeah.
Chris is not, I'm sorry. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay.
Let's skip right over the old business.
You got something to say?
Yes, I do. I brought you guys presents.
Thank you.
What are you gonna say, is it? No, no, I was gonna say, I think you're correct.
There should be one for everybody. These are the last of my stock. This is from Eric Schmidt's Time in Office. These are Sunshine Law books. They are basic. If you haven't read through one of them, that's for you. It's got all kinds of great stuff in there. It's got example agendas. It's got just, you know, basic breakdown of sunshine. You know, if you're sitting around and have some extra time, if you get rained out of the field and you're stuck in the caviar truck, pull that thing out. And I like to go through it with a highlighter. And if, you know, one thing I wanna definitely point out is this is the book that was published by our last Attorney General, Eric Schmidt. Our new Attorney General, Andrew Bailey, is in the process of having new Sunshine Law books printed. They're, it's my understanding, they're just waiting on approval for all of the final, finalizing before they go to print. And as soon as that happens, I will get everyone one. And so.
You can also download these. I downloaded this from the Attorney General's.
Mm-hmm, if you wanna go on the website and see what Andrew Ba, you know, the new Attorney General has on there, that is on there. And then of course, okay.
Well, I read it all, though.
Okay, yeah, so anyways, that's just, I mean, with, with the time those were printed, there's gonna be some minor tweaks that are a little bit different. But for the main, the main gist is in there. And then, and I'll get you some new ones when they come out. I just wanna point out some things about the Sunshine Law that I think most people probably aren't aware of. For example, when any, when someone asks any, you know, a record keeper, person in possession of public, you know, public board and with public documents, asking for a public document is, for all intents and purposes, a Sunshine Law request. Just saying, can I have that? A lot of people like me will send some sort of like an email or mail that's certified to have documentation to give like a time and date stamp of when that was sent. Because once a Sunshine request is issued, it's a 72-hour time limit that you're under. And that's not 72 hours to produce. That's 72 hours to respond. And to respond, that you're not gonna be able to have. Sometimes it's a degree of documents that is so large it is impossible. Or, you know, there are circumstances that do not allow for that 72-hour requirement to be met. And that's why it's 72 hours to respond. So usually you either respond with the public documents within that 72-hour timeframe, or you respond with a reasonable reason for why they are not available and when they will be. And then keep those lines of communications open. You know, life happens, something comes up. This is a very small board. We have a lot of those in our community. It is hard for unpaid board members and underpaid board members and part-time staffers to really stay on top of this stuff. You were expected to, honestly, you're held to the same standards as the St. Louis City Council. And it's, but you were not at this, you know what I'm saying? These are people who get paid to go be there every day, all day.
Right.
So I just wanna say, if you guys ever have any questions, like I am not a lawyer, so I cannot give you legal advice, but I am more than happy to answer your questions to the best of my ability and try to hook you up with someone who can if for any reason I cannot. I think that, I've looked at this letter that you've gotten from the Attorney General's office. It is not as stringent as I have seen some of the communications come out of their offices. I think where you're, just from hearing about what you've been going through and seeing what they're requesting of you, I think it is very doable. And you will be easily able to step right back into compliance. And that's all that they really want, is to be in compliance. And then, just for me, someone who does a lot of Sunshine Law requests, it is absolutely normal, especially if it is a large amount of documents for, for an entity, a public entity to say, we think it's gonna cost probably this much for us to produce these documents. And that would be the time of the staff member that's putting those together. The way it's written, it says the lowest paid staff member. You don't have a lowest paid staff member. You have a staff member. So however much time it will take him to put that together, plus if it's a printed copy, up to 10 cents a page. And then get that together. And, and it would not be unreasonable to ask for, you know, some kind of a deposit before the work is done. But the big, big thing is the lines of communication. If you get a request, respond. It doesn't mean you have to come with a mountain of documents in, in 72 hours. It just means you have to come with a reasonable reason. And a reasonable reason is absolutely, you know, I've, I've heard it's a staffing limitation several times. You know, we don't have the staff to fulfill this request right now. Somebody's out of town, somebody's on vacation. The person who does that, that is absolutely within, for me, within reason. I would just sit back and say, okay, you know what I mean? Let me know, you know, when it's gonna be ready. Let me know if there's a deposit or if there's a fee, you know, what that's gonna be. The thing that we've seen, a lot of Sunshine Law court cases, especially concerning these very rural tiny towns in this last few years, has been, and in one case I can think of devastating to the town. As in, I don't know that they even exist anymore. We've seen a lot of Sunshine lawsuits go through that, where the plaintiff was successful. Two, two years ago-ish, we had the largest Sunshine Law settlement in the history of the state of Missouri. It was almost $200,000. It was against the city of Parkville for Sunshine violations. And for me, it seemed like they were clearly being made an example of by the courts. I think the biggest thing for all of our rural communities and all of our rural boards is to avoid that. And the easiest way to do that is to just comply. And if you get out of compliance, get back in. And this is, and, and what's going on here is absolutely not, it's not gonna be difficult to get back in compliance. And seeing as you've talked to Jay and, and everybody's on deck with wanting to be in compliance, you know, that's the first biggest thing. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay, I will stop taking up your time.
Well, did you tell them that you're the president of the Missouri Sunshine Coalition this year?
I'm the president of the Missouri Sunshine Coalition this year. Yeah, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm wearing the reporter hat tonight.
There is one thing on the clerk report. Hawkins sent the yearly.
Insurance.
Insurance. I had, I had to send the financial statement and do all that. And then it's due 7/1 this year. So I had to get that back to them. And then they will send how much it's gonna be, so.
Be back, me.
Yeah, next meeting. Yeah, and I don't know that's gonna, I don't know how that's gonna work for me.
Yeah.
We have to fight them in here.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, I've got pre-op and I can't miss that on the day of the meeting next month. And then after I have surgery, I ain't worried about that, but.
It's at June 15?
Yeah, that's when I have my surgery. And June 8th is pre-op. I have to go down to hospital and do all that stuff. And then get healed up from that and then have the other one done. But he claims that two to three weeks, I'll be back where I can drive. He's gonna do my work, my right one, which is the worst one. And then when he, he has to give me a date after that, and schedule the other side. And he said, you'll be, he said, it's not near as bad. He said, even though it hurts the worst. But anyway, he said, I would be able to go back to driving in a week. So things have changed drastically. So it's not, the only thing that I'm concerned about is getting all, even getting all this information through with Jordan. But he also told me, he said, if you need more time, he said, I'll. he said, call me and let me know, he said, as long as you're working on it, which that's what I'm trying to do, you know, Jordan's willing to, to, uh, see me as long as it's okay if I go down, I mean, by the board, I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah, we need to get.
We need to get started on all that.
Yeah, so. But the, the board.
Oh, we beat you around the fifteenth, and that's when the sewer, it, bills are done, is somebody gonna come down and take the sewer money to the bank and?
Somebody can.
Someone take it out?
Who goes to the yard?
Well, nobody goes to the yard, everybody.
I knew I'll go.
Well, I mean, we're.
There you go.
So, so, let's make a motion for Jaren to, when Rex can't go, for him to take the.
Sewer deposits to the bank, yes.
Yeah, so have the, have the deposit slips on the key.
Yeah, I mean, I could do all the work at the house, you know, and same way with the, the testing, obviously, if I can't get before my time, I'll show Kent what needs to happen, and, cause you're gonna be gone and busy. And, uh, if I do it, get it right before, you know, then I can go another week, pretty or a week before I have to test again. And I may be able to, I may be in good shape by then, so.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, I'll make a motion for Jaren to pick up the sewer deposits and loan to the bank on, on or about June fifteen.
Yeah, the sixteen.
Yeah, I, I, I usually give on the, a day or so after the, after the fifteenth, so.
It's whatever Rex called you.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion for Jaren to do that.
Kent makes a motion?
He's second.
Chris second?
All in.
All in favor? Okay, everybody's in favor.
Could we, on the, this is something totally different, but could we possibly move the meeting back one day, like on the seventh, or was that?
Well, either that or move it up to the next day.
Or the ninth? I was, I was just going through my calendar, and that's why I was, why I was asking.
Just know where you should be visiting.
So.
Next month would be June seventh for the meeting.
So, yeah.
Is that when you're?
You can do the Hawkins thing then, right? You can do the Hawkins thing then.
Well, they should have it back to me.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's been mailed, so.
Yeah.
So, the next meeting for the board, June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at seven thirty P M.
Yes, if that's what you guys agree to do.
Everybody's.
Everybody, yeah, everybody's in agreements, gr- agreement?
And the insurance with Hawkins thing, Sue just.
Catch you up.
We went to a couple other insurance companies, and it's exactly the same.
Is it like work time, or what is it?
It's, it's liability.
Oh, okay, on the property.
So, so any, any others are like, uh, it's the same.
Yeah.
It don't matter, so.
Yeah, they, yeah, they do it like.
But it seems like it was thirteen hundred dollars last year, but where everything went up, I'm sure it's probably gonna be, it's too many dollars on, probably got the list.
Correct.
Yeah.
List, but, uh.
And then Hawkins, they usually have a printed out list.
Yes.
Two, so.
Yes.
Any warning, but the new board members.
I would like to bring up again about approving bills being paid before we approve them, you know?
Well, some of that's, um.
Well, there's a couple auto withdrawals, that's cool, but, uh, you know, we should have a chance to look at invoices and say, yeah, we, we agreed to pay that earlier, or no, we're not gonna pay that, this way takes, kinda takes that away from us, and we're trying to approve things that are already getting paid.
We have to get, if we do that, we'd have to get the meeting before the billing date, before.
Well, if we have contracts with people, that should be part of it, that, you know, your payment isn't gonna be till, I don't know, the second Friday of every month or something like that.
The phone is.
Yeah, it's taken out.
The R C.
Yeah, R C.
Is automatic.
So the only things that.
Water is the only thing that's.
Right, well, and that's pretty much consistent, right, twenty-four dollars.
Right.
But, um, well, we got more than that, we got the Knox County Clerk, and we have Rex, we have Missouri One Call, you know, I'd just like to, to be able to approve that first before it gets paid.
Oh.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, well, the ones that, the ones that are automatic, we can't, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's all right, I mean, that.
But Rex can bring a bill, then y'all can approve paying him.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
That's fine.
It just, you know, it keeps us from getting in trouble.
But you're gonna have to deal with everything, and, and, uh, you know, if the, the meeting's not on the thirteenth and the water bill or whatever else is, is due on the fourteenth.
Water, water bill, the water bill.
Is due on the fifteenth.
It's, it's twenty-four dollars every month.
Exactly.
Right, it, it don't change.
So we can say, yeah, we can pay the twenty-four dollars, anything other than that.
That can, I don't know how, how's that work?
Well.
I mean, I know.
Do, I mean, all that, a lot, a lot of that stuff's due on R C, but, but anyway, it's only two dollars, I know, but they still got to have their money too.
I mean, in the Knox County Clerk thing, that's a.
It can be approved first.
Yeah, I mean, cause that's, we're not, that's.
We need to be approving all invoices, even yours for mowing.
That's, yeah, I used to, we used to bring bills all the time.
We have to do that.
But the county clerk one, we under every.
No.
No, but I'm sure they understand that, you know, we're saying, we only pay once a month.
You can bring a bill up here.
Yeah, well, I know you, I know the board before decided to do it that way, you know, so nothing would be late when we had all that trouble with.
But the only thing is the water bill.
Well, yeah, and they're not gonna charge you interest, they're, they're, we always have a, a meeting long before the fifteenth of the month. But we've already agreed to pay the water bill, we do not have to have that approved.
Twenty-four, those little type of, at least you want it.
Well, no, we already approved to pay that without.
Water bill's always the same.
Yeah.
She, she just saying like Rex mow.
Like anything other than a normal, other than anything normal, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, I mean, it'll never move.
There, there really are rules and regulations regarding that. I have, we'll talk about them next time. That's it.
Anybody else down here?
I have one more, can you guys, how long, how much money do you guys make for being on this board?
Zero, zero.
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 Can you just go around, starting with you, Kent, how long have you been on this board?
Uh, I've been a board member since two thousand and fourteen, I believe.
Jaren, how about you?
Second meeting.
Jason, how about you?
At least twenty-five years.
Have you been mayor that whole time?
No.
How long have you been mayor?
Since two thousand and three, cause that's when I first got.
So it's twenty years.
When I first got my license for the sewer out there.
Chris.
And this is gonna be my last year.
Cause you're moving out of town.
Yeah.
Chris, how about you, how long you been on this board?
One year, one month.
Sue?
Two months.
And how long have you been city clerk, Rex?
Uh, June of twenty twenty.
And he does get paid. You do get paid.
How many hours do you think?
Oh, yeah.
How many hours do you think you put into novelty work a month?
Uh, let's see, this month it was, uh, fourteen hours for the clerk's job, and then it takes several hours at the lagoon every month, and then I'm mowing schoolyard and all that stuff too.
Yeah, but that's separate.
But that's separate, is that what you wanted to know?
Well, no, and then, I mean, are you, how much are you making an hour?
Oh, fifteen.
Fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So not very much. It's pretty close to minimum wage, okay, I just wanted to kinda make clear, you know, have any of you had any board training, have you, uh, as far as, uh, been to Jefferson City, you know, where they do? Have, uh, have you ever thought about sending board members onto board training, eh, you know, the bigger board training? Is there a reason that, um, that's not been a thing? No?
Didn't really know there was, I mean, didn't know there was such a career.
You didn't know, yeah, like, did you, have you guys ever, yeah, have you ever been like approached by like MAC or, um, mi- the Mi- Missouri Municipal League for membership or anything like that?
I think they have, uh, clerk certification also, don't they?
Well, I mean, it's.
Like a couple different.
I've never heard of a town this small being part of any of that, the challenge is mainly the cost of membership. Has, you know, uh, what's your, you know, annual budget wise, what do you think you're pulling in, eh, just on an annual basis, ballpark? Ballpark your tax base as far as like the money you have to work with?
Taxes usually run about sixty-five hundred dollars a year, um, the sewer is, uh, normally would be around twelve thousand dollars a year, twelve to fourteen thousand dollars a year.
So just, is, is around, around twenty thousand a year is the entire village of novelty budget?
The street fund, uh, it's, uh, usually runs, we get taxes from, from the state. It usually runs, um, around four to, it varies, four to five hundred dollars a month, plus, uh, money from taxes goes into that fund too, uh, the street fund.
So annually, all in, what do you think you guys just have to work with on an annual basis? Twenty-sixish?
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars.
And then, how much money did you guys get with co- with the, uh, CARES money?
Twenty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars, thirty-six cents.
Would you guys say it's fair to say that that's not very much money?
That's right.
Yeah, it's not very much, right.
It's not, and to make it work for, and you can't.
You know, the community, uh, they need to turn loose on the projects that would actually help, you know, I mean, street repair would be a big plus, you know, so.
So I guess my final question is, why?
Why are we on board?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Because.
Why would you do this?
There is a town board.
Well, I'll tell you what, there's two, get this to be too fucking hairy, and I'm doing this for free, I'm going. I'll just say that right now. Last month or two, it's been getting that way.
And you, and so, just, just to be clear for all of you, you're on this board because you want there to be a board, because.
Well, there's gotta be a town.
There's gotta be a town, I live, I live, a lot of us have lived here for thirty plus years, I've been here a long time.
Yeah, I've been here thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, I've actually been.
I've been here that long, but I still wanna do what's right.
Forty-one years, and, you know, both me and my wife have had businesses in town, try, and brought money into the community in the past, and this is where I plan on, when I get where I wanna retire, to retire.
Well, I'll let you, I'll be done now, but I feel, my opinion's obsolete, but I feel like that's a very good common thread.
Thank you very much.
Somebody got anything else? Somebody wants to adjourn?
Jaren, next motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Sue, she, uh, Sue seconds, all are in favor to adjourn.